This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Eau Claire School Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Secretary Iverson, are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, we are.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please, for verification of quorum?
Commissioner Beeka?
Here.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Torres? And Commissioner Boo? Absent. Thank you.
Okay. That will bring us then to the public forum part of our meeting. So each regular board meeting, we have 30 minutes for citizens to address the board, to express viewpoints or concerns on agenda or non-agenda items. The 30-minute period may be extended at the discretion of the board president or via board motion. Each citizen will have up to four minutes to address the board, provided that he or she does not have additional or new information. The board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor any person connected with the school district in the public forum. So that then will bring us to the list I have here. And first is Glenn Bovee. And if you just come up and make sure that the microphone is on with the red light and state your name and address, please.
How is it working? My name is Glenn Bovee. I live at 306 Paris Place, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. According to the little thing that you put out here, I'm not sure if I'm going to be allowed to talk about this, but I was recommended by the DPI from our now-governor that I should take this up with the school board before they address the issue. And that is one of mandatory reporting. Our house was attacked by four Memorial High School students. And they were caught and they confessed to the crime. It turns out that the principal, the then-principal of Memorial High School, knew about additional crimes that were uncovered, perpetrated against us in the investigation by the police, and he never said a word to us. We needed to know this because for fear of safety for our son, because these were four longtime bullies of his. And we asked the then-principal if there was anything beyond the initial what we knew of, the egging of our house. He said nothing. And he knew that of these other crimes of which we did not. We had a right to know this for the safety of our son. Given the fact that of his fragile stability due to longtime bullying, we feel that he violated the mandatory reporting issue of which he should have told us of the additional crimes which would have saved us attorney fees, because what happened is one of the boys in particular got off scot-free because the judge said that he could only be tied to one criminal act, which indeed there were others that he was tied into. The staff and most of the Memorial High School students knew of the initial attack at the time, and it would have been a perfect opportunity for this school district to show that they have a true non- or anti-bullying policy by bringing these students to real justice. The DPI said that there was state law, that they could have been as much as expelled from school. But nothing was really done. In fact, the boys were rewarded. One of the boys was allowed to go back on the National Honor Society. Another one was allowed to be representative on the homecoming court for the fellowship of Christian athletes. It's a good Christian that goes and eggs somebody's house. I guess what I'm looking for the board to do is take action on this matter.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Okay. I do have-
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
-packets that I would like to pass out to anybody that is receptive to these.
Thank you. Next on the list is Justin Hendrickson.
Justin Hendrickson, 1324 Caden Court. Good afternoon, board. I'd like to talk to you about listening sessions for elementary school boundaries. This is quite a critical time for our district, and it's important to get it right. Our district has a difficult history with listening sessions, boundary changes, and school closings, so I'm sure you are concerned about proceeding carefully at this time. Please consider a typical family at the affected elementary schools. The vast majority are unaware that their boundaries will be changing, let alone why, how, or when. The typical family is unequipped to bring constructive criticism, concerns, and ideas to a listening session. So far, the little information available has been focused on closing Roosevelt and not broader boundary implications for the other six Northside schools. The changes discussed at Demo and Trends will affect hundreds of families, many of whom are unaware as we speak. If you are serious about conducting genuine listening sessions, not just presentations, you need to provide information several weeks in advance. The first listening sessions are quickly approaching. I recommend that information released include a summary of the factors involved, draft maps for different options, and a realistic explanation of the decision-making timeline and process. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us then to Mark Goings.
My name is Mark Goings. I live E17450, County Road V in Augusta. What I want to talk about a little bit tonight, or this afternoon, actually, is I know this time of the year, we start looking at next year's budget. And as the last board meeting we had looked at, we're projecting about a $5.5 million budget shortfall. But I was also thinking about some of the things I've heard board members talking about over the last year or so. The idea of looking at the budget and at our programs in a much more broad view of what we do and how we do things here. I also was thinking about Dr. Beeka last, at the last meeting referred to the concerns about morale and that compensation could be part of why somebody wants to stay or be here, but how there's also many other things involved in that. And I think that's something that's important to look at, because many of that is the feeling that you can, that you can influence the world around you and the job that you do. And that lends itself so well to shared decision-making in that process. So between now and the budget gets finalized, there will be a process. And next year, we will have a budget. The big thing that I would like the board to think about is what does that process look like? How can we use, how can we use shared decision-making in that process? How can we bring our 1,200 employees into that? You know, there definitely would be an education process to let people know where things are. But then there's also the part of where things could be. What could our budget look like? How could we choose to use the assets that we have? And that process is going to be unique, but it'll also help with the buy-in, because decisions will need to be made. And those decisions may affect compensation, they may affect programs. But it'd be much better if, as a member of the Eau Claire School District, each employee can say that this is what we decided. And so I'd encourage the board to think about how can we help pass the budget? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our open public forum section of the meeting and takes us then to the board administrative reports. First superintendent's report, Dr. Harder Beck.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming events for the school board. All of the events, except for one, will take place here at the administration building. From January 22nd to January 25th, we will have school board members who will be attending the WASBEE convention, and that is being held in Milwaukee. On January 31st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., there will be a meeting of the Revenue Committee. That will be followed on February 4th by a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee at 8:45 a.m. and a school board meeting at 7:00 p.m. Then on February 5th, there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee, which will take place at 1:00 p.m. And that will be followed that evening at 7:00 p.m. by a meeting of the Family Advisory Council. And then on February 12th, the LEAP Committee will meet at 4:00. Tonight, we have a very brief video to show you. And that video, while Patty's getting that set up, this is a video that focuses on some of our post-secondary opportunities for students in the community. And this video was put together by Stan Nesbit and Andrew Sevelin, and it gives some testimonials about what is happening in the community with our students who have been placed in internships, apprenticeships, working with youth options. So Patty?
Youth apprenticeship has worked for us because, well, we have a great partnership with the Eau Claire School District for one, but they make it really easy. You know, it's, we didn't have to do a lot of legwork, other than we got to meet the students ahead of time. It was kind of that try-before-you-buy, you know? We got to make sure they were a fit for us, and so we weren't just given random students. And these are all, you know, these are already students who have an interest in what we do. So it's a natural fit when you have someone who's already taking some level of interest in what you're doing versus trying to convince someone who's maybe on the fence.
They're not only learning to learn the position, but they're learning kind of on a broader scale of how does a business work? How do I fit into this team? What can I contribute? What? I think it's a different perspective than maybe someone who's not able to utilize it as credits.
Youth apprenticeship gives the student the opportunity to determine whether or not they made the right decision in a career early on versus spending years and thousands of dollars in education to find out once they're in the workforce, they made a bad decision.
Just last summer, I think it was, we had a youth apprentice come in, and he was really open to trying new things. So we sicked him out on some patent research. As a matter of fact, it got to the point where he was able to write a preliminary patent to the point where that was a usable document.
We have eight that are still with us. Or they left and went off to college and then came back with their degree.
Best experience that I can tell you is a guy that still works here. He has been here for 14 years, I believe, and he started out as a youth apprenticeship program in high school. He worked his way through CVTC Tech School Program. We hired him on full-time and is now one of our lead techs.
For us, those have been some of the more productive employees we've had, and obviously many of them have stayed on with us after their youth apprenticeship. And so that's good. We also hope that they tell their friends.
So, you know, it's great to have an opportunity to hear from our partners in the community. And I think you're going to see tonight a little bit of a theme in our board meeting. This afternoon, we received a $5,000 donation to the Eau Claire Area School District Homeless Program, and that came to us from Trust Point. Tonight, we're receiving an $8,000 donation from the Western Wisconsin Chapter of the Wisconsin Restaurant Association, and that will be divided between Memorial and North, $4,000 to Memorial and $4,000 to North, to buy culinary equipment for the new culinary lab updates. So the work that we do in terms of our students' instructional programs, the support for our students, we couldn't do without our community, and it really connects so nicely to our strategic plan and the board's goal of connecting with the community for partnerships. So it was nice to have this opportunity to highlight those partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a pretty brief president's report. First, I've heard some great feedback about today, our Making Martin Luther King Jr. Day a holiday in our district for students, as well as a day of service and learning. And I hope to see many of you at the Martin Luther King Jr. Remembrance Ceremony at 6:00 p.m. at St. James Catholic Church on 11th Street. In light of the partial shutdown of the federal government, which is now in its 31st day, I want to make sure to let our parents who are furloughed as a result of the shutdown know that their family may now be eligible for our free and reduced meal program. Eligibility for the program is based on the last four weeks' income, and layoff status is also considered. So you can call the Food and Nutrition Office for more information at 715-852-3020, or pick up an application at your school or at the board office. And I finally, I just want to remind board members to take the new doodle poll that Secretary Iverson sent out regarding scheduling our next closed session as a board. And then that takes us to our Student Representative Report, and welcome aboard Molly Green. We have experience with Greens already this school year, and I think your sister's in the audience, too. So we have a lot of great reinforcements, but whichever you would like to go first.
All right. Well, congratulations, Molly. Coming back to Memorial, we recently had our ACP session while the underclassmen registered for classes. Seniors had enjoyed the presence of junior achievement. And then last week, we finished up the semester with finals. We all survived, and life is good.
All right. Like Gwen said, last week, we did finish up finals, and students were stressed out for the week, but everything went well, and students are looking forward to their next semester schedule and the new classes, so.
Thanks. Then that takes us to our School Board Committee Reports. Do we have a report from Budget Development Committee? No? Okay. LEAP Committee?
We met, well, let's see, a week and a half ago, maybe now. And we continue our policy work. We are continuing with developing our process. And then we also had a visit from Joe, and just to investigate potential for a charter high school. And that's it for LEAP. We'll just continue on.
Thank you. And then I'll report for Policy and Governance. We met this morning, and we are bringing forward some recommendation, some recommended modifications to the School Board Handbook, as well as Policy 164 regarding school board member accommodations and expenses. And we're also going to be recommending changes to Policy 823 regarding access to public records. And that was it for that meeting. And we do not have a legislative update, so then that will take us to the Consent Resolution Agenda. Unless if I missed any committees, I don't think I did. We, I did attend the Demographic Trends Committee on behalf of the board, and the information that I'd asked be shared with you, I believe, was in the Friday letter regarding their ongoing work. So that takes us then to the Consent Resolution Agenda. We will adopt all of these unless if one of them is pulled. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2019, the financial report of December 2018, gifts in the amount of $16,046.33 for the period of December 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018, payment of all bills and net payroll for the period of December 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018, the Human Resources and Employment Report, administrative contract extensions, approval of the cost of living adjustment for the Head Start Grant. So I would approve, I would entertain a motion to approve 6.2 through 6.8.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. We will do a roll call vote then, please.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Beeka?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries, and that takes us then to our one individually considered resolution tonight, which is consideration of the 2019 Resolutions to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention. We have Commissioner Torres representing us as the district's delegate for the 2019 Delegate Assembly. And there are a total of 22 resolutions that are being recommended to be brought to the floor by the Policy and Resolutions Committee, many of which are resolutions which we brought forward as a board. I believe the lion's share of them, actually, so it's kind of the Eau Claire Show in Milwaukee this week. So if anyone has any questions about any of these, the document is on there that kind of outlines each, but otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve those resolutions as, for our delegate to vote in the affirmative as our proxy, our representative, rather. Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. We've done many of these resolutions as a board ourselves before we worked on them for Wisconsin Association of School Boards. The one that is on here, Resolution 1907, the Special Education Reimbursement Rate and Other Special Education Provisions, I just wanted to point out to the board, which you've probably all looked at, when we did our resolution, our resolution is written at a 90% level. And when you look at the resolution that came up by the Resolutions Committee with WASBEE, they're at 60%. So I don't know if we should have a conversation about the equity with what is provided for our voucher private schools relative to special education and what they came up with on WASBEE, because I'm sure there would, don't you think President Luganville, there might be a debate on the floor as to changing that resolution?
I think there could be a debate on the floor, yeah. I'm not sure when that was brought up in the committee. It kind of came, they were coming at it from the standpoint of the Legislative Affairs Staff felt that a 60% would be more doable for them to advocate for going into this budget, as opposed from jumping from 26% to 90% in one year's time. So that was kind of their recommendation, was that it be 60. There were, I want to say, 18 different special education resolutions which were submitted for the committee, and so it was our task to put them all together. Some of them were at 60, some of them were at 90, and some of them had different numbers. Some of them had phases. So that's certainly something that could come up, as far as amending it, yeah.
I just wanted to bring that up, because I know with the Blue Ribbon Commission, their recommendations to the legislature, I think as far as special education funding, there are four options. There are no 90% options from the Blue Ribbon Commission either. And I just wanted to throw that out for the discussion of the board on whether we would like to at least send that amendment to Madison or to WASBEE.
So just to clarify, you would want Eric to vote for all of these, but you would want Eric on behalf of our district to offer that amendment with the, to change it to 90?
Given discussion by the board, I can, I honestly see the, I can understand the 60%, but we are still providing 90% for our voucher private schools. And so I don't know if that can be delineated, or, you know, the equity just isn't there yet. And that's kind of where I'm coming from, but I'm wondering how the other board members feel.
Yeah, not seeing any lights yet. I will add this. There was conversation about that, of what is the actual reason behind having the percentage here? Is it for having equity with the vouchers, or is it for just wanting to have an increase in the public education level? The way the discussion went was, there are actually clauses on the books with WASBEE that want to abolish the voucher system as a whole. So that's already the goal of WASBEE, is to abolish that entire system. So they're looking at this from the standpoint of what do we want for our system? So that, I, just to clarify that, but I, if you'd like to offer that as a motion, we can certainly discuss that and consider it. Or do other board members feel like it's worth bringing in amendment or just supporting Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea of equity with the voucher arrangement certainly is a concern, but I do understand just the practicalities of wanting a 60% number. I imagine on the scale we're talking about, it's going to be much bigger than the voucher funding, even at 60%. And so maybe that's the reasoning. I think it makes sense, that reasoning, especially in the context of the general position of WASBEE to eliminate vouchers entirely. Addressing the voucher question maybe that way is just as effective. So I guess I don't feel strongly about changing it personally, based on what little I understand about it, based on this conversation.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Well, I bring up the topic only because I think this educates the public, too, relative to the concerns and the resolution work that we do do. In order to make changes legislatively that are equitable, I'm okay, too, with 60% if our board remains vigilant in the fact that we do want equity, and that is the stepping stones that we need to do in order for that to be attained. And I thought it was important to have the conversation.
No, I appreciate that, Commissioner Hambach-Boyle.
I would just agree, because that's, I mean, there's details about this question that I wasn't aware of until we had this conversation, so I'm glad we've had it, if only for that reason.
And you'll note, too, the Resolution 19-11 in here is, it adds that the WASBEE supports eliminating the special needs scholarship program. So that's something that we'll also be voting to support.
And then I just would like to add that I'll send the board members an email within the next couple of days with some dates for some upcoming trainings on advocating with the joint finance hearings that are coming up, relative to what we just talked about and also other issues. There will be a trainer of trainers on February 9th, I think it is, at the university we're collaborating, the Wisconsin Public Education Network is collaborating with other grassroots organizations to train some trainers. And then on March 10th, we will be pulling people in from the community to be trained in order to advocate in this budget for our public schools. So I will send you that information, and wanted you to be aware of that. Okay?
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other lights on, so I would entertain a motion to approve consideration of the 2019 WASBEE resolutions as presented.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. And we'll just do a voice vote for this one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. All right. That motion carries. And that takes us to our Committee and Work Session. And first is a committee report. And who do we have presenting that? I think we have Miss, okay, we have Kevin Thompson. Okay. So, whenever you're ready. And this is a committee report regarding a proposal regarding high school athletic facilities.
So as Kevin is getting set up, I want everyone to know that a proposal came forward from a community members about perhaps enhancing, improving the fields at Memorial High School. Kevin Thompson, who's the athletic director, is going to take us through that presentation, and he's going to give a little bit of, an overview of what the proposal is, the history, talk a little bit about some costs, and make a proposal in terms of partnership between the community and the school district. And I think we have a representative from that group who's with us tonight to talk. Is that right, Kevin? And will you introduce our guest?
This is Kevin Thompson. I'm Kevin Thompson. I'm a fellow of the Eau Claire School District. And this is Brother Corporation. Just a little bit of history behind this project, this venture that we've been on. It's evolved over about two years. We've had a group of people in the community- We've had a group of people in the community that have reached out to administrative team at O'Clair Memorial and have expressed a vision to improve our overall facilities. It's, it's not in the, it's not in the best of conditions. We make it work. And there's a lot of excitement, obviously, when you have a group of people come forward to you. And, and so we're able to wrap that energy over the, and the first proposal that we kind of looked at, we realized that the scope was too big. So we had to get back to work and, and restructure it so that it's really manageable, feasible. And I think we've done that. So who are we? We're parents, we're business people, we're community members, public leaders and coaches. That's who we are. That's, that's, that's what we embrace. We also have with us Ross. And so Ross, if you want to talk about your end, that'd be great.
Thank you so much, thank you for having us. I'll thank the board first for allowing us the opportunity to be here today in the district for the opportunity for a really exciting project in your district. We were contacted about a year and a half ago by this group to look at some options. Like Kevin said, we started really big picture and honed in on a really good vision and something that we felt was right for your, for your facilities and for your students and for the community. So Brother Corporation, in a nutshell, we're a landscape architecture and civil design firm out of Stevens Point, Wisconsin. We specialize in sports field architecture, but we employ all different people and take a multidisciplinary approach to developing these types of projects throughout the communities all around you. So thank you very much for having us.
So, I will go to the next slide. So why are we here? All right, we have a tremendous opportunity to partnership with the community and the community members. As part of our strategic plan as well, right? We all know that. We also have an opportunity to promote school pride. Again, I think anytime that you look at improvements in a facility, it generates excitement. It also generates a, a sense of cohesion within your school. I can talk about the addition that we had within the lobby, with the referendum that was passed. And the kids that go to the lobby, you can just sense that there's a sense of satisfaction that they belong, this is, this is us, this is Memorial High School. And they truly love it. It's an opportunity for us to improve our curricular, but also co-curricular programming. With this opportunity, curricular wise, PE, our fire department, has the opportunity to use this facility. Also band, so it's not just an athletic venue, it's not just an athletic opportunity. It's really a school opportunity. And also improve safety. Our current facility right now, last year, there were portions of the field that experienced, I would say, some gopher runs and some gopher holes. And obviously, that's a concern when you talk about player safety. Our grounds crew, obviously, did a good job, they did address the situation. But again, we could come by later and sure enough, another gopher hole would appear. But it gives the opportunity for us to improve on safety, increase accessibility. I'm hoping that we realize is it's just not a school function. I mean, it's, it's something that's available to our community, okay? So we have other venues out there, other groups that can also access this. It also gives us the opportunity to address equity, which I can show later in a different slide. And then finally, hopefully, we can minimize costs. There's transportation costs that exist. When we take a look at busing kids down to Carson Park for football games, eventually the goal would be to have those games there and you can eliminate those costs. Maintenance costs. Maybe the fees that we have associated with the parks and rec and rental of those facilities, we can eliminate that. And then also, we have the opportunity to generate revenue. So that's why we're here, okay? We think it's a great opportunity to partnership with our community. The proposal consists of the following, this is a visual, okay? And then I'll talk about it and then go back to the visuals. So here are the items, the bullet points that we're considering. And Ross, just feel free to jump in at any time, okay?
Yep, no problem.
So, would you like to go ahead right now?
I can walk through, just real quickly, the primary items included as part of the track and field redevelopment project. You know, when they came to us, they were really looking at a track project for the multi-surface, or a multi-use synthetic surface. So the primary elements included were the existing track. Your existing track is actually in good enough condition to where we can save dollars by not having to rebuild the entire track. We would look at putting on a new synthetic surface, all of the track surface on top of that track. I think the really exciting portion of the project, where we're going to get all of our use hours and provide all the cool opportunities to your community would be the addition of the multi-use synthetic turf surface. As part of the project, we also looked at reconstructing the pole vault and long jump, triple jump field events. So instead of keeping that pole vault inside the track, we're going to maximize the amount of square footage for synthetic turf by relocating those two jumping events, long jump, triple jump and pole vault, the northwest corner of the track, directly adjacent to the high jump area, which puts all of your jumping events all in one location. Also, as part of the project, we looked at redeveloping your throwing events to throw in safe orientations with inherently dangerous sports like discus. We wanted to evaluate, you know, how we would be throwing these events. So it's a new discus and shot put throwing area. Also included as part of the project would be a new decorative plaza space and entry into the stadium. As part of this, you can go in, just an opportunity and a really cool visual as to how you can provide naming right opportunities possibly, but really creating identity for that new facility with an overhead entry arch and a ticket booth. Also included would be new fencing. The current existing condition of your fencing is dilapidated. So we'd be redoing the four-foot fencing and then six-foot fencing around the outside facility as well. So I don't think I've missed anything, but that's the majority of it.
No, that's really good. And then if I go back to those bullet points of why we're here, we talked about safety, okay? So right now, for track and field, this is our pole vault area right down here. Well, the pits have become larger over time. And so given our existing pole vault runway and pit area, it, actually the pit, it interferes with this inner cer, this inner radius of the track. So it's a safety concern that we have right now, okay? When we talked about being strategic in our planning, we have an existing building right here, this is our storage area, that has water to it and electricity. So one of the things that we would like to do with this is restructure this so that we have the opportunity for concessions, but we also have the opportunity for bathrooms outside here. And of course, our facilities don't have that. So I mean, we received quite a few complaints that when we host an event on a Saturday and we don't have the building open, and they use our porter potties, but sometimes as an inconvenience. It's multi-purpose, okay? This is just not football, okay? This is just not athletics. We have also specified its curriculum. But when you think about athletics, okay, it's football. We have soccer, and you can see here that the lines would represent the soccer field as well. So, and then there are lights within this proposal. So now, in reference to scheduling events, we have flexibility to accommodate many groups, many, and groups not only within the school, but also outside the school. So in terms of scheduling, to me, this is a no-brainer. PE, PE uses the facilities in reference to tennis. They'll use a softball field over here, they'll use this baseball field over here. But I think we all realize with the synthetic turf, you'll usually see around a synthetic turf during the springtime, when the sunlight becomes a little bit more intense, all right? The snow here will often melt a lot quicker than compared over here. So accessibility to the field here for PE would become quicker, all right? So they, my point is they have the ability to use this field to accommodate whatever they have within their curriculum. Let's see. So like Ross was saying, okay, we have a synthetic turf surface that we're considering. Resurfacing the current track. And our, our current track right now, the existing track surface is in need of replacement. It's in need of it. So this can be embedded within this plan, which, so to me, this is very, it's excellent timing. The improvement of our current field for track and field, I talked about the pole vault area and the safety concern. Our long jump and triple jump would be relocated. The discus throwing area, as Ross pointed out, and our shot put area would all receive enhancements. There'd be lights and scoreboards that are included in this proposal. There's a main entrance that includes concessions and bathrooms, as we pointed out, and then also a storage building. So within this proposal, we have quite a few bullet points embedded here. You can see the matrix here, and this is a great way to kind of analyze what we have. So for physical education, as we pointed out, we have the ability to provide, I think, opportunities for them to cover their curriculum on that particular surface, all right? Band and music programs have the opportunity as well now. Many times, what I'm trying to get at is that many times, band right now, when they're looking to perform or practice for upcoming marching events, all right? They're fighting on our current existing fields, they're fighting for space with the athletic teams. Again, if we have this opportunity with our lights on the, and, and you have the lights available, you have this field available, all of a sudden now, you have the adaptability to schedule for them. Athletic teams, many times what you would notice if you were to take an overhead shot, get a bird's eye view, you would notice that our fields take a considerable amount of stress, considerable. The fields get worn incredibly fast. Again, with this opportunity, you'll limit that. Inter-males, okay, we have inter-male volleyball, we have inter-male basketball. But let's open up the door a little bit, what about inter-male soccer? Right, inter-male football. We have the opportunity now to look at those pieces compared to, right now, we don't. It's all about having the ability to schedule these things, and which this could provide. And again, now the partnership with the community, it's going to create excitement. There's no doubt about it. I mean, I'm excited, and I think many people in this, in this room could be excited in the community. And to me, there's no doubt that people would want to be a part of that particular surface, that field. And so having the opportunity to use it would be something that would be just extraordinary. The, the equity concerns, right? So one of the things that we wanted to do was just to show you what our facility looks like. Norris Facility, if you take a look at their athletic facility right now, you can see here, they have a track, right? They do have two soccer fields right here. They do have three particular softball and softball fields. They have a regulation baseball field, okay? And I think this one over here is probably where their JV two level of practice. For our practices, we actually have to go off of the premises for our baseball teams. So we have to use the facilities from the city. Well, you now have the ability with the synthetic turf where you could actually practice here, baseball. Softball, same situation, we have really one field. Now, our, our facility, if you take a look, this is where our JV two practices, okay? And this is not a regulation baseball field, okay? It isn't. But this is where our JV two will practice. Our JV and varsity, they're off-campus, so they practice over by Fairfax. Well, we could limit that to some degree by having them practice here. Softball, softball, we also have the opportunity, we have one field compared to their three. This field, you might be saying, well, what is this? Kind of looks like a pit, if you, it looks like a little pit to me. It's, it's, it's China, it's an infield practice. It's a in, excuse me, it's infield practice opportunity is what it is. There's nothing for an outfield here. So when you take your softball team and you want to work on infield practice drills, this is where you go, okay? But now, all right, you have the opportunity to have your varsity practice here, and then your JV could go here and flip-flop. So in terms of, I guess, square footage of your overall facility, I would say there is a differentiating factor here, for sure. Funding options. We have a group of donors that are willing to put in fifty percent of the overall cost toward the project. And obviously, very grateful for that opportunity. So what we're asking from the district is would they be willing to consider the other half? And what would be their options in helping to make this come to fruition? So there are some ideas up here that I think could be viable, but there's naming rights, advertising, reprioritize the five-year capital plan. There's a state trust fund loan and issuing debt. And if you take a look at the money figure right now, I think you could add up the two, and we're looking at approximately two point four million. So based on that, what would be our next steps? What would be an action plan? What would be a timeframe to consider? So we have our discussion today. It's a short window of time, right, Ross? It's, I mean, when we're looking at this, because we would like to be able to utilize this field right away in the fall. So.
Oh, very feasible.
But feasible, yes. And based on Ross's expertise, obviously, he's been associated with many plans, many synthetic turf implementations, so that's encouraging. But then we would need board approval by February fourth, a final design within fifty days. Bidding would go in twenty-one days. Construction one fourteen and completion would be by September two thousand and nineteen. And I think this is where maybe you could talk about some of these components in reference to bidding and construction.
I think the most important part about how we would approach the scheduling of the project is we want to hit a good bidding window for you folks. So the idea of moving forward soon with looking at board approval is to be able to get the project design permitted and then out to the bidding community for them to have the opportunity to take a look at the project and put good numbers. From a construction standpoint, and working with many clients over the last thirty years, we've never missed our first football game. So we've promised you guys that we'd have a field ready for that first game for the JV team. The big thing's bidding and getting good numbers at this point, so.
And then finally, when I think about our alignment to the strategic plan, I think we're hitting on quite a few of these bullet points, I really do. The biggest one to me that stands out is our partnerships with the families and communities. It really does, I mean. And also, you talk about academic achievement, you talk about school pride when things like this happen. There's no doubt it creates that energy within your school and that connection with your school that can help promote growth in many areas, socially, emotionally, not just academically. Collaborative cultures. So we have the opportunity to take a wide array of groups and then utilize that surface to expand on what we would want to see within our schools, right? We want to see them be able to connect. And so those connections could occur in many facets. A powder puff game can be held. Instead of at Carson Park, now we hold it there. There's the, I think it's the WSMA, State Marching Band Competitions. That's something that could be hosted here, too. And there's no doubt about it that when you have opportunities like this, where you're able to partnership, it does attract, does attract people, attracts businesses, attracts new teachers, so. I think it's a win-win. So obviously, that's our opinion, but it's very exciting. And obviously, we appreciate your consideration, very, very much so. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Board member questions? It's a lot to take in. Commissioner Klinkhammer?
So.
So, one quick question, when we look at the slide with the funding options and the projected 1.2 from the community and the projected 1.2 from the district, and then my understanding, based on what you said, is you send this out for bidding, and your idea is that you'll come somewhere close to that number. If it's more or less, is the, are the community donors committed to just 1.2 million? So, let's say it's more, is the school district expected to make the over amount? Or, are the community donors, do we know, is this like a, whatever the cost, we're going to split it kind of arrangement? Do we have a sense of that?
We do have a sense of that, yep. The community donors are very much committed to the half and half. So, I, and then, I would also state, and I think you can reaffirm this, that when you take a look at the budget, the numbers that were provided, Ross, are pretty conservative.
Yeah, I think it's a very conservative approach to budgeting. That being said, these are real numbers that we've gotten over time over the last year from the bidding community. We have a very good sense in the number of projects we have that exactly what the pricing's coming in at. That being said, with the approach, I believe it's conservative, and you're sitting in good shape. We never want to be over on our bids, so...
Could you give me a better sense of the, as far as like the donors? I'm assuming like, local developers, or could you possibly kind of clue us in on that a little bit?
Can do my best, yeah. They're in the community, yep. Developers, their parents, they have kids in our school district. They have a vision, they want to help improve the facilities, and they realize that they're, by the means of doing that, they also realize that there's a benefit, I think, or a relationship that goes with that, right? Within your community, within your school, within the kids, and their growth. And, that growth can, like I talked about earlier, could be academically, it could be socially, emotionally. But, yeah, they are developers in our community, they're just, and they're also parents, they have businesses.
I'm wondering, too, the piece about generating revenue is obviously one that we've talked a bit about as a board now, we're starting to talk more about it. Was there any sense, kind of an estimate of what that would look like? What kind of, perhaps, looking at what kinds of tournaments or events we've not been able to accommodate in the past, that we would be able to, or that kind of thing?
That's a good question. So, for instance, right now, our track and field facility, just, we have been unable to host a new WIA event, just due to its condition. So, you have an opportunity to generate revenue through those WIA events. You have an opportunity where, for soccer events, we're unable to host a WIA sectional, based on our field right now. Anytime that I put in a request to the WIA, we don't end up with it, with this new facility. Further down the road, could you host varsity football games there? Absolutely. And then, you could, instead of paying the Parks and Rec for the rental to use Carson Park, now you save on those monies.
Okay, so as far as, as far as the, like, a WIA sectional, could we get figures sent to us as far as what kind of revenue that would bring? And, could we see what kind of, as far as Parks and Rec is concerned, what we're currently paying per year to utilize those facilities that we would not utilize if there were something like this? I think that would be helpful information for the board. Other board member questions? Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, I agree, that would be a really helpful context. And, just more broadly, any kind of case that you think can be made about financially, this paying it for itself and sort of helping to lay out that case, doing the footwork for it, a little more beyond what's in the deck here would be helpful.
Aaron, I think something that could be helpful, too, is, in a lot of these projects, what we've done is we've worked with the district to establish a number of hour of use analysis to look at currently how many hours you're using your facility for. And then, being in national turf system, and then going to that synthetic turf system to see the number of hours you could potentially use it for. Looking at the dollar per hour of use comparison really starts to justify how these projects work over time.
Yeah, I think that's a good example of something that just came up for the first time in this moment, as far as this discussion, and if there are more of those, that, and more of those that we can put into a sort of a compiled document of, now, these are not all guaranteed, I'm sure, but it's sort of what potential is for revenue.
We can work with Kevin and put together that analysis.
Fantastic, thank you.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
And, just piggybacking on what Aaron said, I'm interested in the same information. You've also talked about naming rights and advertising, and obviously, we can't get real firm numbers, but if you have any sense of what kind of revenue those types of things generate as well, thank you.
Commissioner Vu?
First of all, thank you for the presentations, I appreciate giving us the information. I just want to maybe direct this question with the district administrator. I don't remember this topic being a strategic priority for the district. If someone can fill me in, how this topic fits in the district priority? And, second question is, how does this information get... How does it, how does this information fit in the general budget if we were to move forward with further decisions?
I can talk a little bit about strategic priorities. One of the priorities that we do have is community, partnerships with communities and families. And, this was something that we were approached, about, community members approached us about this. So, it does offer the opportunity for us to identify and implement innovative partnerships with community members, which is part of our strategic plan. The other part that is really related to the strategic plan, and Kevin alluded to this in the presentation, is what happens with student achievement and student social-emotional growth when they feel connected to school? And, right now, there are barriers in place for some students to be connected to school. So, as an example, if I am a baseball player and I need to somehow find a way to Fairfax, is there a barrier in place right now for me as a Memorial High School student? That could be a barrier. And whether or not, first of all, we know that barrier exists for a child is one thing. And, second, how are we helping to remove that barrier once we know it, I think, is something else that we look at. But, we do know that students who participate in co-curriculars are more connected to their school, they do have better academic achievement and social-emotional growth. And, those things are both in the strategic plan. I think the other thing to think about, too, is it was in reference, I think, a lot of what was presented was in reference to athletics, but the same thing could be said for band students that need to go to Carson Park to practice currently. So, are there barriers in place for children that need to find transportation to Carson Park in order to have marching practice? And, the fields at Memorial right now are not very accessible to students in wheelchairs or to some students with other special needs, just because of the conditions of the fields. And, the synthetic turf would allow easier access to those. So, I think of some of the Special Olympics events and practices that are held off-campus right now as well.
May I ask for a question before we move on? So, this topic involved something similar to capital plan. Capital plan, we looked years ahead to see what anticipated need will be. This sounds to me like it's a reactive priority. Am I wrong?
This wasn't part of our five-year capital plan. It was not.
I'm going to piggyback on that. I think that when we were approached with that information, it was like, this is a really great opportunity, and it's not on our capital plan, but how often do we have community members coming forward and saying, "Hey, we're willing to put up $1.2 million for this, for our donation." And, so, that's why we felt it was really important to get it in front of the board, because this is a rare occurrence for the Eau Claire School District to have a donation of this size and be able to be that impactful to our students as well. Dr. Hardback?
I want to make one more point, too, Commissioner Vu, and that is, you know, we look for connections with our strategic plan, with our budget, and how we best use our resources and if they are aligned with our strategic plan. And, while this seems to be coming up kind of as a last-minute opportunity, it is an opportunity for us to connect many of the things that we've been working on in terms of raising revenue to meet some of our needs, and our needs are many. They're not only related to achievement and social-emotional, but they're also related to our facilities and the upkeep and stewardship of those facilities. So, this is a unique opportunity for us to partner with the community and have the kind of collaboration that I think the board has been striving for in some meaningful and significant way. So, I think it's something that, you know, I would strongly advise the board to take a real, close look at.
Commissioner Hamakwa?
Yeah, I just have a couple comments. When you look at the district options for funding, I always think about what do we have in place right now? I know what was operationalized for naming rights and advertising with our scoreboards. So, who is responsible in our district for naming rights and advertising and raising money for that? Who does that? That's one question. The other one is, if we put issue debt, to me, that means that that kickstarts to our conversations about a possible referendum. Because certainly, that's kind of what I'm thinking, is that question. So, I just want that clarified, so...
Sure, so, from the Revenue Committee and Equity, we've been looking at the policy for naming rights and advertising, and we have recommended that policy and governance, take a look at that. I think it needs to be updated to allow some more flexibility in the naming rights and in the advertising piece. So, that is on the agenda, I believe, for February 4th, for us to discuss with policy and governance. We don't have a go-to person right now that works on the naming rights or the advertising. I can speak from the Dectronics experience with the two high schools. That was a joint effort among athletic directors, the business department, as well as probably a few other team members as well, looking at that. Obviously, it's something new that we haven't done before as far as naming rights, and so, I think we would want to ask some of our surrounding districts that have done that. It's very common, and we would learn from them as well, and then, you know, look at what would work well for the Eau Claire School District. Just to clarify on the issuing debt, we don't have to go to referendum to issue debt. There's two mechanisms to issue debt in a public school setting. One is to go to referendum. The second one is to do what we did with the $25 million that we borrowed for the referendum. The referendum gave us the ability to levy, to pay the debt. It did not give us the ability to issue the debt. And, so, what we would have to do, it's a 30-day notice that we have to put out to our community and our taxpayers and tell them what we'd like to do, and then give a 30-days' opportunity for them to, I'm trying to think of the right word, like, oppose it and basically say, "No, you can't do this." And then, after that timeframe has come up, then you can look at that option of issuing debt. And, so, that is the issue debt that was there. Obviously, it could be part of a referendum, but I, when we were talking about the timeline and looking at it, it would make more sense to do the 30-day window as well.
Have we ever done that before?
Yeah, we did it with the $25 million that we issued.
Have we done it other than that?
We've done it both ways.
Yeah, I think we did that with Prairie Ridge.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Prairie Ridge was the second one.
Okay, got it.
I don't see any other lights. The one, one piece that I will say is, I think it's really exciting and heartening that there is a group out there that wants to come forward and support the district in this way. I think from our perspective, it's important that we do our homework and have those conversations about where does this fit? Where does the 1.2 million, where or how does that fit within our other priorities as a system? But, it's an important conversation to have. So, I know there were some questions that board members, oh, and we have one here, too, and others, some questions board members have. And, if there are additional board member questions about this in the coming days, who would be the best contact?
So, if you could get your questions to me, we will attempt to get those answered to you and get them out in our weekly memos to you.
Thank you, Gwen?
So, Molly and I had a couple questions regarding your presentation. You mentioned frequently the off-site practices. Can we have an estimation, you, we asked for estimations for other figures, an estimation of how many teams require off-site facilities and the cost of renting, and then also busing was another thing that you mentioned. Is it, so, obviously, it seems like it would be more advantageous and less costly to pay for this all at once. Is it possible to do it piecewise and not have to pay that 1.2 million right now?
To do it piecewise? So, let's see, you have the, I don't see that as a possibility right now. Let me just show you what we have. So, you have the synthetic turf surface, the resurfacing of the track, the improvement of our track and field facility, which needs an improvement already in our district. There's the lights in the scoreboard, the lights that we have proposing here allows that flexibility to accommodate many groups and scheduling as well. The scoreboard is an essential piece for the games that we have, like to keep score.
To clarify, I don't mean leave some of these out, I mean over time, not do this all in one year, distribute it over several years.
So, Gwen, let us have a little conversation and see if some way that work could be laddered. I think right now, the proposal is kind of dependent on everything coming together at once, but it's certainly worth conversation.
I think that could be included in some sort of memo with the other answers. Okay. All right. Any other board member questions on this, as of right now? Okay, so, student representatives, okay. And then, we can, of course, follow up with more to come. Anyone in the audience have questions regarding this? Because it's a committee report, the public can't ask questions. We don't answer those, but you can ask them for the record, and we can, anyone? Sure, just, you just come up to the microphone and you state your name and address.
Say name and address?
Yep.
Tim Burns, 3443 Dale Road. I guess my question was just about whether or not it would be just for junior varsity athletics at this complex? Or, if it would be for the varsity as well, for football?
Just for junior varsity. They'd be old enough to typically, that field would just be used for football. We want to use older it up to any other venues actively. So, soccer has the opportunity to play their varsity games and their JV games. To tell you the truth, in reference to soccer, this could open up the door to have three levels as well, in reference to the scheduling aspect. Currently, we have two fields with the lighting, you can play a 5pm, 7pm game. Along the kids, we have to catch them soccer, which is quite a freedom of mind. To me, this has the opportunity to open up that door and all have three levels, you can accommodate that pretty easily.
Sure.
So, soccer needs to be accommodated, football, softball needs, you can play softball anytime that you have.
No, I just, is it Ross, correct?
Yeah.
You had just mentioned that it was, the JV game would be JV, you would be able to play on the fall. So, I was just curious if included varsity, I didn't see like seating arrangements or anything as well, so I was just curious if how that would work out.
And, we don't want to get into a discussion at this point, so, thank you for your question. Are there any other questions? Yep?
Mark Goings, GANU 17450, County Route V Augusta. And, it can be in the report, but as you're looking at the planning of this, one, a few questions I would have is, what would be the life expectancy of a synthetic turf like that? And then, what would, and then, along those lines, what is the eventual replacement cost of such turf? And then, do you have experience working with other districts as far as planning for the payment of that? Because I think that would all be good to be part of that discussion as far as, especially for... if we're looking at doing debt, having that complete picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the audience? No, but we could provide that in the answers. Okay, thank you. And then that's it for that presentation. So thank you very much for coming. Nice to meet you, and good to see you again. And there'll be more to come on that. That takes us then to our work session as a board, which is for the school board's self-evaluation. And we want to be out of this room by 5:45. So don't worry, you'll see this, that we don't need to get this complete tonight, but I'll go over this, and then we can have a conversation. So I put on your desk the board self-evaluation, a little synopsis, I guess, a one-page kind of handout of a description of the process of the board's self-evaluation, the areas which the board includes in the self-evaluation. So there are, I believe, nine different areas that the board looks at. And it really is just an opportunity for the board to reflect on its performance, if we're meeting our goals and priorities, and allows us the chance to look to the next year and how we're meeting those priorities, or how can we better meet those priorities. So the board self-evaluation in January 2018 included four goals, which we have outlined here in this handout, one regarding the achievement gap, one regarding our communications as a board, speaking with one voice, one regarding having a mechanism in place to track our progress, and one regarding district priorities aligned to the budget. So I think it's safe to say that all of these areas are ones that we talk about quite frequently and have worked through and worked on. They're not finished yet. Looking at this year's self-evaluation, we generally do a, have everyone walk around the room and put post-its on different sheets of paper, how they're feeling about things. And it's a very taxing process, then, for all of those post-its to be turned into a working document that the board can look at. So this year, I thought what might be more, I guess, seamless is to have the board's self-evaluation first come in the form of a survey, not too dissimilar from the 360 surveys that we would fill out or other surveys like that. So this survey has 12 questions, which are, can be a short or long answer, and they're not all required to fill out. You can skip some if you feel that you would not like to speak to them. But this is the draft survey. And then these will really allow us as a board to look through the responses, put them all together into some sort of a report, and then see from those responses, are we still on track as far as our four goals that we had last year? Are some of those available to maybe move off the list? Or are there additional goals that we would like to set as we move into the 2019-20 as far as planning as a board? So I'll give you a minute if you'd like to read through the document. And basically, the first several sections are just asking to fill out open-ended feedback, both positive or areas for growth regarding the different points, fiscal oversight, governance, policy development, accountability measures, monitoring student achievement, the relationships that we have with the community at large, legislative involvement and advocacy. So it asks for those as kind of open-ended questions for your positive or critical feedback or questions that you may have. And then it moves into follow-up, which we didn't necessarily do last year, was follow-up on the year prior. This will allow us to see, these were our goals last year that we set. Do we feel sufficient action has been taken? If not, how would we like to move forward? Of course, this is a draft, and why I wanted to bring it tonight was so that we can talk through this and see other additional things that we'd like to add to this survey that might be helpful for our board's self-evaluation process. Basically, I just want to make sure that we have a good batch of information here, a good feeling of where board members are at and how we can move forward in a positive and collaborative way. The last two are questions, one is regarding the governance piece, as we'll look to schedule a future board governance training or a set of them. What would help make those trainings most effective for you? And then just that final question, which gets at our professional development as board members, which is, of course, one of our areas that we can evaluate and speak to. And so that just gets at what resources or information would help enhance your role as a board member. So that's kind of what I put together as far as what we could use this year, but I'd be open to any questions you might have or maybe feedback you have to make it better. And of course, being mindful that Commissioner Torres couldn't be here today, then we'll all have the time to do the survey electronically and then schedule a work session to kind of go over the feedback of it. I think it's also worth noting that Dr. Hardaback will have the ability to take this survey also, so that we can have her feedback, if she's interested in taking the survey. Because in prior years, we generally invite the superintendent to take part in that process with the post-it notes and noting down areas for growth or areas we're excelling. So that's what I have for you. Any feedback? Yeah, Commissioner Hambukwale?
I'm wondering about the administrative team, because they gave feedback before, too, as well.
So typically, when we have done the board self-evaluation, part of my participation is getting feedback from the executive team, and we'll certainly do that with the survey.
I think this has the potential to be a much more fruitful process this year, as opposed to expecting everyone to come up with things on the fly in a period of, you know, one or two hours. We can, you know, take a week to go through this and really think through it or look back at things that we've worked on or talked about. So is there any other? Commissioner Harder?
So the idea is, assuming we're all happy with this draft, that it would go out as an electronic link, then we can fill it out electronically?
Yes, if there, unless if there are changes, what I would plan to do is send it out tonight, share it with board members and Dr. Hardaback, and just ask that that be completed prior to our first board meeting in February, when we could either that meeting or the next meeting after that have a session to go through the document itself and then move forward as far as the goals. The other piece that isn't here, but that I just want to reference, is the last question about what resources or information would help enhance the role as a board member and that kind of professional development piece. I actually, I think that would be a helpful one to ask of the student representatives to the board. And we haven't involved them in the self-evaluation process, the whole process, because they are not board members. But I think that that's one where that specifically gets at their role as a student representative, which does enhance our work as a board and plays a role in our work in providing us feedback or information or questions that maybe we wouldn't have thought of. So I plan to put together something maybe a little bit similar to this, a little bit modified, that we can send up to the student representatives. And I think that would be helpful for us to kind of map out how we can work with those individuals in the coming year in a healthy way. Commissioner Hambukwale?
I read through these. President Lugan Bell, I find them to be great questions. Take the time to really ponder them and provide a narrative would be great. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, happy to. Commissioner Vu?
Thank you. I like the fact that you include some great question at the beginning, and at the end, you also, question eight, nine, 10, 11, it addressed the previous priority that the board identified. But I wonder, you used closed questions versus open questions. What are you trying to get at? Would it be more beneficial to have ranking? And then, in addition to how we may ask question what, I'm just questioning, maybe you thought through the questions already?
Sure. Yeah, no, it's a good question. As far as, I didn't want to go as, like, rank on a scale of 1 to 10 or that kind of thing, because it is, it's pretty difficult. My 10 could mean something far different from someone else's 10 or my 8. So I thought it might be easiest just to get the direct feedback. And I tried to write the questions in a way, the prompts in a way that could be relatively open, but if there's a suggestion of maybe a different question that's asked, or maybe just an open-ended area for other things to be added, I'd certainly be open to that. Commissioner Harder?
Would there be an open-ended question, that could be a question 14, that would be more sort of?
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Other comments, yeah, not covered by previous questions, perhaps.
We can do that.
I don't know if that answers Commissioner Vu's concern about the open-endedness, if we added that question. Like a question 14, that's more sort of, any other thoughts beyond what was covered here, or is that too open-ended?
I was thinking about a lot, a lot the opposite of what you were saying, Mr. President. You want to know direct, and I'm questioning, do we know as a whole board how we perform by not having a question that will see the picture? In this way, you're asking a question that does not allow the whole group to be looked at, high or low or medium. So isn't that a, I mean, in order to improve, you would want to know how you were doing. And I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if that's not what you want to see, how you are doing, then you might want to know exactly what we want to work on, instead of asking a question like, how are we doing? I mean, how should we be doing? I'm just throwing this, I tried to answer the question, and I'm not sure how to answer the question. I could easily say nine, I mean, a no to number nine, and not sure how to answer the rest.
Well, I think that I certainly want to, I get what you're saying, that you might not feel like you, like you'd want to speak to all of these or be able, feel like you'd have the ability to do that. I think that if we left, if we leave these, though, in every board, you know, perhaps we have a newer board member that has no opinion on number nine, or no opinion on number 10 or whatever, they can leave that blank, but there might be others who have really experienced that or served on a committee that have worked on that, and they could perhaps speak at more at length or in more detail regarding it, which maybe would then help inform the whole board when we have that meeting together to, because ultimately, what'll be done with this is we'll put it all in one document, which can really summarize and have that conversation, and then see where are we at based on this? Do we see a lot of common themes? Where can we set goals to kind of move the needle? So I kind of felt like they're open enough where it leaves it open. If board members don't want to answer some of them, they don't have to. They're not required to fill out the form. But I'm really, I'm open to any suggestions folks have as far as changes to this. It'll be the first time we've done it in survey form, but we've only done it for a few years itself as a self-evaluation, so. Yes, Commissioner Quintero?
I think I agree with what Commissioner Harder was saying, that if you have just one question at the end, which is other comments, then if something's not addressed in the document, or there's something that you want to say, or a question isn't quite right, you have all the space in the world to put what you do want to say in that last question.
Thank you. Commissioner Hambukwale?
And maybe we could kind of coach each other going into this, that if it appears that it could be a yes/no answer, that's really not what we're looking for. We're looking for some quality input in the sense of where these questions lead us. And then, Commissioner Vu, maybe your concerns will be addressed deeper in our work session, and if we do need to delve more questions or add on to this, which I think is important. And that's part of the self-evaluation through Key Works, that really takes you through those critical questions. And maybe that would help us then as we get into our work sessions. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So if, does this then look, I'll add a number 14 regarding other comments or feedback. Otherwise, does this survey look like it's okay then to send out to board members and the superintendent? Okay. And I think, Commissioner Vu, I think a lot of what you're talking about, hopefully, we can work through that as with the work session, once we have this. I think we can have those deeper conversations and follow up. Okay, so I will send that out electronically, and we'll just, you'll have several weeks then to work on it, and everyone will get that. Anything else regarding the board's self-evaluation? Does that sound good to everyone? Okay. So that then takes us to request for future agenda items. Are there any requests? Okay. Seeing none, and I would just remind board members to fill out that doodle poll, so we can try to get our close session scheduled. But seeing no requests for future agenda items, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, our meeting is adjourned, and we hope to see you at the Martin Luther King Celebration.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.